Back. Commissions. Bye, can you hear us? You're us Commissioner Phi.
I can hear you, but something happened with my computer, just a second, I can't see myself.
No worries, Chair Harrington stepped out of the room for a moment, so it is back to you.
So Danny, let's get started.
Hey, great.
As per the chair's direction.
Great, good afternoon, everyone, my name is Danny Ladusma, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators, and I'm here today to talk with you about two things. I'd love for to get to present to you stakeholder feedback that we've received on the draft of Washington County's Strategic Plan Update twenty two, twenty twenty, twenty 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 four to twenty twenty five, and would love to get your guidance around the proposed edits as a result of that that feedback. So if we go to the next slide. I think you have the clicker. Oh, I have the clicker, sorry. Alright, so this is what we'll be doing today. So as you know, around August of twenty twenty three, the board embarked on a project to update Washington County's strategic plan. This came on the heels of a decision that despite, you know, a robust history of strategic planning and a need for strategic plan, planning, the real sort of realization that Washington County as county government really needed to focus in on building some strong management systems, and decided to go the route of providing an update to a strategic plan rather than something wholesale, given the state that we were in at the at the time. So in in November, the board worked on a began a process through multiple roundtable sessions to craft an updated version for stakeholders' review. And so if you'll remember, each of the October, the November, December, and January roundtables, we took the different elements of the strategic plan update and provided some more of your internal direction, your direction for internal offices and departments, as well as trying to align to the future direction of one Washington County and the design the future ethos that we've been trying to implement here at the county. So throughout this time, we also engaged in feedback. So in addition to proposing the process for the development of the plan, we proposed engagement. And so with your guidance, developed a stakeholder list that included ACRE, CCI, CPOs, the general community, and staff via the county's leadership team. And so after each one of the roundtable sessions, we would engage with each of these different stakeholder groups to provide an update to make sure that folks were being informed about the, not only the elements and the work that was being done, but to give a sense of sort of the discussions and the priorities that were emerging at each of the roundtables. In January, after the draft, the final draft was approved, we also expanded to the general community via a website where we asked for very specific feedback. And we published this on the web, the World Wide Web, and through, and this this questionnaire that had several questions. We also sent this to several of our, to all of our boards and commissions. We also did some feedback with our sister jurisdictions via the chair mayor meeting and via the county administrators' city manager meeting. So we've been doing that all throughout January, I missed a little bit of a nice really trying to to keep on the momentum of the strategic update planning process that you all have engaged in. And we're here today to 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 give you some summary of the feedback that we've that we've received to date. So the draft, as you know, was, we took the, all of the words and designed it. And Philip and his team really just did a great job of capturing that this is internally focused, but still people-focused, human-centered-focused document, and did a really good job organizing, taking quite a bit of information and disorganizing it and distilling it into a way that was really understandable by, you know, the average Washington County resident. We did, we did get some feedback about that, that was very laudatory, so I want to thank Philip for that. So when we asked everyone questions in this phase of engagement, we asked them four key questions. We asked folks to talk about what was most compelling or most exciting to them. We asked them if there was anything missing, when they think about the whole of Washington County government, if there was something that should be included. We then said, well, after reading this, like, what do you think? And how would you describe Washington County's direction for the next five years? And then we did a sort of catch-all, or like any other changes that you might, that you might plan. And, you know, I think the engagement, I would characterize the engagement twofold. For the stakeholder groups that we worked with over time, they they were very sort of, you know, complimentary, very laudatory, very thankful for the opportunity to participate and be a part of that. And what I thought was really interesting is that in the feedback that we received online, where there was less of that sort of relationship, there, those themes kind of carried through. Some of the the things that people liked was very similar, or the things that folks wanted more was also very similar. So I think, you know, on a day like that, we'll we'll take it. So I wanted to talk to you about the three themes that I heard. The first theme is that folks did talk about how that the information was good, that they thought that the way that it was, the way that it was organized, the way that it was designed, it gave a really good insight into what Washington County government does. And so they appreciated the description. We got a lot of really good comments about how one, one community member likened it to a car, right? Like, you know, it's, 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 it's really clear that you've got like a well-run car, and and that's what I really like about it, that's what's compelling. However, when we talk about the second theme, is that a lot of folks were sort of like, well, this describes what is, like, tell me what's going next, or tell me a little bit more detail, like, I want more information about what's really important to me. And so a lot of folks wanted that sort of like next step, that next level of detail to be able to, you know, tell if 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 we were going to be able to to accomplish what we said we we wanted to. And so that same community member who talked about the car said it's, it's, it's like we have a really well-run car, and you described it beautifully, and the car is nice. I'm not so sure about where the road that the car is going on, right? And so I think that also kind of led into our third theme, which is where folks said, you know, it's overall a really good plan, like, you know, it's transparent, it's clear that you are being intentional, but, you know, public, public government, right? Like, a little bit, you know, a little bit skeptical. And so, you know, one way that folks think that it could be more meaningful is by the establishment of metrics. We heard a lot of folks say, well, how are you going to know that you're, that you're going to do what you say that you're going to do? Like, where's that, that sort of next level of information? And in the memo that I provided to you, I would go into a little bit more detail with some, you know, and quote a lot of the detail that we heard from folks, but those three, those themes really became clear. And I think it's also something that, you know, I know that the chair and pressure trees spoke to as part of their participation on the ACRE, on the Advisory Council for Racial Equity. We had a lot of community members sort of, you know, kind of contending with the fact that this is not a sort of like community-wide vision, right, for Washington County residents a as a whole, and also not a department work plan that describes a sort of next steps. And so a lot of the feedback, I think, shows that sort of calibration that folks struggle with as they read a document like this. So which, you know, by design, was meant to be a high-level snapshot of where we are with some, with some detail about the aspiration of of how we'd like to get to the next place. So as a result of those themes, in your packet, there is a draft copy document. And what I proposed are adding two significant new elements. One was a sort of new element called next steps. And it's a short element, but it describes that sort of like what's coming next, where, you know, we, we talk about that, you know, this is a strategic plan update. Over the next several months, individual departments will start to add those metrics, will start to work on those other key management systems, like you heard earlier today around the capital improvement plan. And taken together, that will all sort of inform a one Washington County work plan that will eventually have a dashboard where folks can see progress against all the goals at work that are being set. And so that's that new element. And then we were kind of reminded in a couple of places that some of the terminology, although we tried to be very plain language in this update, that some of the terminology may not be sort of widely known or widely held. And so in last year's budget document, there was a a document that provided those definitions and described what all those like commonly defined county terms were. And so we proposed adding that document into the appendix. Overall, I was really
Document that's there is a budget style guide.
That's, that's the document that that we would use. So it, the name is Budget Style Guide, but it really, the the aim of that is to get at the common terms and definitions. Overall, I think that for the, I think all of the engagement that we had where we were informing folks and keeping them updated, really helped to get the the quality of feedback that we received, both online and in different, different meetings with folks. And so I just want to open it up for any questions or suggestions.
Well, I think you have this added new element, next steps, which, if I heard you correctly, is in response to some of the emergent themes, but I don't agree with some of the premises.
Okay.
Okay, so what this board has done with this strategic plan update is reviewed all that we've had. We've, and we're memorializing the way that we operationalize in a way that we think will continue to serve the county government through the timeframe, as noted in the strategic plan. Using your analogy of folks said there was a car, but what they really want is see more detail relative to them. Then you spoke about the department plans. The public does not get to determine how Ms. Angie and company implement to the board direction. So that's the part that I find is misleading, causes confusion, and I don't want to have to deal with that confusion as a board member, okay?
Can I comment to that? Are you done with that?
No, I'm not.
No, I meant, can I comment to what you just said?
No, not yet, because I'm not done with it.
So I might change my mind?
Oh, exactly. What we do, I have no problem with. People are trying to figure out, so where does this take us, right? And those metrics, not a problem with that. But to say that all of that comes out of the department work plans, to me, is misleading. Go back to, and I can't find it now. The diagram that was in the draft document that had the goals and the multiple tools, okay? It's one thing for us to talk about. I think part of what is missing is how these other pieces fit together. So what I'm concerned about is that people are through this presentation that I'm now seeing, since it was shared just this morning, is these emergent themes and the hearing you say that, well, people will get that through the departments. And it's like, no. We all, we have agreement on that structure, right? And we just used that diagram in the CIP. Well, no, it was a different diagram, but it's similar in terms of nature of the structure. And so what we need to speak to is the the thirst that community members have. I don't have a problem with that thirst, but we have a plan for how to quench that thirst. And it isn't buried in separate department plans.
Yeah.
To me, that's the misdirection that I'm
And I think, I think I may have, I think I may have misspoke. So the reason why the next steps is so concise is because it, one of the critical elements of the, of the words contained in the next steps is to describe that diagram. And so we, well, we do talk a lot about the department work plans. We also sort of attempt to sort of show like how all of those things taken together and to describe that diagram, because the diagram, like you said, means a lot to us. But I think, like you said, there's confusion about sort of like, you know, what the average person has the purview over when, you know, the board is the one that is deciding the 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 sort of direction of the county, and then the county administrator is is sort of like charged with that sort of implementation. So but totally open to if I didn't get that right in terms of describing what that work plan, how the work plan relates to the other elements as well.
It's a little hard for me to say, because the original document with its diagrams is in here, and I don't see any rev marks that explains what those different structures are relative to this document. So work to be done, I think, is where it leaves. Okay. I don't have a problem with there's next steps, but I'm not, I'm not thumbs up on these next steps, that's for sure.
On, on the, the thing in the, in this copy document, okay.
And what you're, a part of your next steps is what you yellow highlighted in
That's right.
pages up, yeah. Well, to me, not being an expert on strategic plans, but it seems to me the strategic plan is a fifty thousand-foot document. And what they're asking us to do is bringing it down to an operational ground level, and I think was conflict. And I don't know what you'd call a document that does what they want us to do, but I don't think it, it shouldn't be blended with this document. It's okay for us to tell them what our next steps are, the way you've got it outlined here, but I don't think it needs to be part of it.
But I think in between these comments is that we don't want to open up opportunities where there aren't any.
Right.
And I think that that's, in essence, what we're, what we're talking about here is making sure that there's a clear distinction between feedback on a fifty thousand-foot document versus feedback on work plans. Very different things.
Yeah, maybe work, that's the, the, the term title that I was
Looking for.
Yeah.
You, your next steps is what you wrote, but it seems I read all the comments and somebody saying, well, I have this issue or I have that. It's a real disconnect between what a strategic plan is and what they were asking. So I don't know how it was phrased in these various meetings, but appear that it's much like the US Constitution, they did it in seventeen seventy-six or about, you know, seventeen ninety. In that period of time, they didn't say, we're going to plan for the next two hundred years of exactly how you're going to operate. They just said parameters on how one would operate, how we would look at things. So is there some methodology, and I haven't really thought about it, there's some methodology to kind of get what Pam was going as well, I think, with her comments. How do you amend the strategic plan? And to me, that's done through this board, it's something. Or, you know, how do you have an input into, like, I'll use an analogy, it might not be good, but the budget document, you're required by law to go through a budget process, it spelled out what that process is, you can't change that, that's state law. But what you're going to put in that budget from year to year, would it be impacted? But I think people think that they need to have something in the strategic plan.
Yeah.
Maybe Catherine said it best, but it has to be flexible. Your strategic plan has to allow them to be able to do that. Without that flexibility, it's not really a good living documents. So how do you capture that?
Yeah, well, I think, I think you've kind of hit on the challenge, right? So I think the attempt of adding the sort of next steps was to try to alleviate some of the anxiety that folks said were like, you know, my thing about blank, about, you know, funding this road, this very specific road, isn't in there, and we were sort of like, it's not going to ever be in here. You might see, you know, so something like that in sort of these next steps in in terms of these other systems. And so I think we maybe missed the mark in making sure that we, we have the right tone around making sure that folks understood kind of like the limits of this document and also their, their sort of like feedback, right? Like, that if they struggled with it, it didn't necessarily mean that, you know, things would change. So I can go back and work on hitting a different tone and being a little bit more explicit about the role.
How were you going to put this in? I just, how were you going to put that, if everybody said that was wonderful, how would you put that in the document? I would have, in your mind, not our mind, but your mind.
If everyone said what was, the plan was wonderful?
Yeah, it said, looking forward, next steps, what were you going to incorporate that?
That was, that was going to be the, the, the yellow highlighted was what I proposed that we add as the next steps.
That's what people were reacting to, that, that, that's not next steps. I mean, there isn't the next step until the plan is amended or changed, but
Right, yeah, I think, yeah, that's right.
Those strategic plans, again, there's just need, are supposed to have next steps. There's a document that you read, and I think, quite frankly, I think we did a good job on that. So now you say, okay, you can say now, what's next? And you, we're going to direct him away from the strategic plan into maybe a more, but what do you call it?
Work plan?
Yes, a work plan.
So what I think you're hearing is, no, we're not thumbs up on the next steps. No, I don't want to just include the budget style guide, as is, or common terms and definitions. Like drinking from a fire hose, it's got all kinds of budget stuff in it, but
It's not pertinent, just the strategic planning work.
So
Clean up.
The other thing, I have real questions, because the the summary of stakeholder feedback doesn't even tell us how many people even took this survey.
A couple, oh, sure.
And it just lists out what community groups you met with. But usually when we get a review from an online survey, we at least know, is this ten people, is this ten thousand?
It was, it was a couple dozen people who had, had replied by the writing deadline.
Okay.
I remember, did you have more? I remember the discussion in ACRE when we talked about definitions of terms and that type of thing. I would agree, I think this is overkill, that it really needs to reflect back on what's in the document that might need definition, not just something that slides in as a tool. Does that make sense? Because I look at things like coordinated care organization, well, yeah, that doesn't have to be in here.
Well, and it tells me in a way that in the introduction, oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to not chew into the microphone, and as such, I wasn't speaking into the microphone. In the introduction, in our quest to be brief, yet clear, I think, looking back now at the introduction under, there's a paragraph on this strategic plan update contains both documentation of our vision, mission, values, and approach, blah, blah, blah. And a comprehensive listing of goals by the five areas of Washington County government. And so really, that, that very simple set of words emphasizes that this is the high level. And these, these do summarize the, the major categories of responsibility for this county government. So the, the level of my individual life specificity, it's at, think of it in terms of these high levels of responsibility, right? Like elections, or, you know, if you're a young family, you're going to see it or experiencing it differently than someone who is later in life, right? Perhaps, just looking at it from different lenses that way. And so you still have to look at it from a high level, right? That the county government is providing this range of services that does span across our population. And it's almost like I wanted to emphasize that whole first sentence, because it's incredibly powerful in its brevity. And I think speaks to a little bit of the emergent theme, I was about to say trend, the emergent theme that you offered. Because when we were going through the exercises of the vision and the mission, we were reminding ourselves and had visuals of reminding ourselves that we are the county government, right? And how, and what defines our role in service to the community.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm a little, just listening to it, because I didn't read the remarks, but, so did you hear anything specifically about public safety, about W T, about HHS, about saying, no, I really thought this is what they do, or this is what they should be doing, or some, did they get that granular? Or they were just kind of up there, okay? So
No, the, the feedback that we got was sort of like, I, I, I'm not sure what, I care about public safety, what is public safety going to do, right? Like, you know, what's, and and so it was, it was more about like wanting to see more details underneath the the goal. I looked for, you know, was, was there anything that was like contrary, right? Like, is there anything that, like, what the goal stated in the document and what folks were advocating for? And I, I didn't find that. The closest we got to something like that was like more emphasis on blank instead of this. And, you know, there wasn't any emphasis, you know?
Okay. I thought that piece was Chinese. I never had that.
Well, where are we at in terms of this presentation?
Yeah, so, so what I'm hearing is that we could, we could next the next steps as a sort of, as an element and that, that if we decide to add a glossary to make it super pared down and only contain like the words that are in the documents.
I'm a little uncomfortable, I, I agree with the spirit of next, this next steps as is. But I think what we're missing is how is this then used?
Yeah. So, so I think I could, what I could do is come up with a draft that says, you know, a little bit more detail on the, the management systems diagram and to talk about like how, so frame this as, this is the plan, this is all you're going to get, this is the plan. And this will be, this will help, will be used to help inform, and then just describe each of those management systems. You know, basically describe the thing better, okay? I can definitely do that, and so what I
So we want to get it right
Yes.
Before we adopt.
Yes.
Okay, so the date for adoption may need to change.
Okay. I was going to try to submit this to you all soon. I was gonna try to submit this to you all soon for next week, but do you wanna push that back?
You're shaking your head, you, you do wanna push it back?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is an important doc, we don't need to be urgent, but this.
Great. Okay, I can do that. All right, thank you very much.
Was that the last slide of your presentation?
Yes.
Hang on one sec, trying to get back to your presentation.
Yes, you did.
Since we didn't, I didn't know we had it until. Okay, Commissioner Fai, do you have any other thoughts?
No, I think, Danny, it sounds like you got a really good feedback. I didn't have the same reactions as everybody, everyone articulated when I saw your next steps, the, perhaps it could have probably be presented in a Gantt chart, but I didn't have the reactions that folks articulated here. But good job and look forward to how you distill that information in the next steps. But I, when I was prepping for this meeting, I sort of, in my own head, understood the strategic plan was our element of looking ahead and the work plans are the reasoning back. So I'm really interested in the work plans. Because it'll be really helpful and advantageous to our community, not only understanding what a county services is, but how can they hold accountable and how could they participate in the improvements of our services?
Question, my part, are all of your listening sessions or outreach, are they done or? Okay, so nobody yet, yet to comment after our mistake?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I fear we're not on the same page. So in one of the slides, I said what packet page it was a minute ago, like ninety-three? If you could project it. Somehow, somebody?
Oh, sorry.
I don't think your slide deck includes that doc.
That one.
This one?
No. That one. What the problem is, is the community thinks that they get to comment on all these department strategic plans. Is the sense that I'm getting. And that isn't the way we work, it's not how we have worked.
I hear.
And I'm coming back to this because of what Commissioner Fai said. So.
I, I hear what you're saying, I think my perspective in, in hearing a lot of the feedback was not necessarily wanting to change those, but just wanting to know to help better understand the goal language. That it, you know, it was more about a want to know than a want to change. I think a lot of folks were, when we talked, when, when folks talked about like having influence, what I heard was a lot of folks wanting to be able to see the outcome through like metrics or dashboard and that that would be when they could come back to the board and, you know, kind of do then. But I, I think a lot of it was just, a lot of the feedback in it, it was, I don't, I don't think that, I think most of it was positive, but was just kind of.
So you're saying two different things, Danny. There's a work plan and there's a dashboard, right? The performance indicators and dashboards and outcomes, the things on the right-hand side are fallout of the following the strategic plan, how we measure things. And we have some new foundational pieces
Right.
that the community, the couple dozen who've read this document may not know
Right.
are underway as well.
Yeah.
And so those, for example, who are very well versed in LUT having a public process on the LUT work plan.
Right.
Which was very historical, are speaking about that as opposed to department work, work plans for general government, or assessment in taxation, or elections, or, for health and human services. So I think there's a misplacement of a lot of comments that I'm hearing generalized, right? We don't have any of the specifics, we've not been provided those. So towards this, and how is this county government strategic plan with its vision, mission, goals used? Goes towards a stat, along with these other tools, helping to establish those circles that we see over on the right. Okay, because the single department work plans and strategic plans are really underneath that. It goes to how the organization is managed to achieve these results as expressed through outcomes, KPIs, and used in a dashboard, as well as those single department work plans are put together in light of what budget resources do we have? So that's where it gets a little, this, this graph needs some description to go along with it.
Yeah.
Because I think there are too many assumptions being made that all things at certain levels are equal.
That's right. I, I think, I think I, I hear us speaking the same, like, about this. So in the next draft, hopefully you can see that alignment.
Okay. So what? Excuse me, so what the board is asking for is, we wanna see a updated and complete draft and come back to it in work session, make sure we're all clear on it before we then move to adoption. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Wow, it's good to see that big, long journey coming to an end. It will help us out into the future. I'm looking a little quizzically, we have board and leadership communication next, and we are expecting Erin Doyle to come back in with another letter. Oh, she's, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
It was in between a bite.
Yep. Thank you Chair and Board, Erin Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager. We got a, another request for a letter over the lunch hour. This is a project that North Plains got a letter of support from us last year, but narrowed in scope. Last year was though their civic center and their library, this year they're only requesting money for their civic center. So we present this letter for your direction and guidance, so see if we can provide them a letter of support.
Could you clarify for me what they're saying a civic center will encompass? Let's see, City Hall would be demolished in favor of a new building that would house civic gathering space as well as all those other things, right? Say that, but I assume it was, would.
I, I believe it's the City Hall and the civic, like, the community gathering.
Yes, it would add. Okay.
Yeah.
Not worded very well, but I get the point.
So it's replacing the current work center that's next door to the library, correct? That was built in the nineteen sixties and they've cleared out.
It's pretty bad. Okay, do we have thumbs up on this letter?
Thank you all.
Yes, you do. Okay.
Use your quota.
And Kevin will get that one in an updated packet as well. Okay, you stepped your quota. Yeah, no.
So bad.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Let's, let's move to board communication, who would like to go first?
I think Nafisa since she's, oh.
Mr. Will, you should go since you're volunteer.
I can go.
I didn't mean, I can go.
Okay.
Yeah, probably the business, the, the most I did was attend NACO. Commissioner Fai and I attended NACO in DC last week and attended a number of sessions, it was really good. The first day of Saturday, you know, their sessions, if you remember, their sessions go from nine o'clock in the morning to two thirty in the afternoon. So they're long sessions, we get a lunch break, of course, but there's a lot of stuff in it. So the first one I attended on Saturday was the public safety and it was, it was good all day. So they touched on gun violence protection, gave us some statistics on that. They also, there was just a number of other organizations, the National Weather Service talked about their relationship they wanted to develop with our emergency operations, our EOCs. The Center for Prevention Programs was obviously talking about mental health and violence and some statistics there. FEMA stepped in with, with their talking about identifying disaster zones throughout the country. And as we can all imagine, there's gonna be a number of those disaster zones Midwest and East just because of all the storm activity they have. I was kind of expecting from the National Weather Service, I thought, you know, we'd get a big global picture of all this environmental stuff. They didn't talk about that at all. So then.
So, so should I take out of this that the Pacific Northwest isn't a disaster zone?
Unless you would define it as a tsunami zone, and that would qualify, or an earthquake zone. But others far as storms, no.
Wildfire? Did they?
You know, they didn't even touch about wildfire, that's interesting.
They left that to the Interior, Department of Interior.
Well, you know wildfires is kind of our western issue, and so, I don't know, Midwest.
It was drought?
Yeah. So there, there's a lot to it, there's no doubt about it, but I thought they, I thought they did a good job. He, that National Weather Service was emphasizing the fact that they're probably gonna get a forty million dollar budget cut when they're asking for forty million dollar increase, so it's going the wrong direction. So I don't think he's feeling the love. But anyway, just good information to hear from all those folks. Couple of other things that, that was really interesting to me was, well, first of all, if there's, was two main themes throughout the entire conference, it would be affordable housing and it would behavioral and mental health. And so I guess that's three, but that was, that was a common theme, theme going through the whole thing, and it was good to hear that. Our large county breakout session was focused on affordable housing. So there was some good things that came out of there as well. But one of the new ones is artificial intelligence. So we had a session in the major, in the large room, so there was probably a hundred and fifty people at this. That tells you what kind of attention. And it was interesting because we had four panelists, one from Microsoft, one from, what's the one I hear? Work Systems? No, Workforce? Yeah, Workforce? Salesforce, I always put work in there, Salesforce. They were on the panel and then a couple of other from the federal government. But they would finish with their, kind of their communication of ten or fifteen, as if there's any questions and everybody was looking at them like, we don't even know enough to ask questions, because you got artificial intelligence and then there was a new aspect of it, the generate, generative artificial intelligence, which is the bad stuff. They did talk about their conversations with the companies that are gonna be developing the software to enhance AI and some of the responsibilities that they're gonna have to try and minimize and limit the ability to use this for bad stuff. But anyway, so that was, I, I like the, I like the legislative conference better than I like the summer conference. But, so I thought this one was well worth my time to do that. Other things, as you know, we talked about, we passed the HOPS resolution, KGW interviewed me last week on that. I attended the Portland Metro Chamber State of the Economy Breakfast last week, and that was good. I forwarded the slide deck to you. That was very specific to Portland. There was a couple of slides in there that had Worcester County in it and Clackamas County in it, particularly in the negative migration that all of us are experiencing. And then if you looked at the, that slide deck pertaining to negative migration, that it was, we're not alone in that, some big cities like Denver and like Seattle are experiencing some of the same thing. So it was, that was an interesting time.
So was their data source still Eco Northwest because they've been proven wrong?
Eco Northwest was the presenters. So take that for what it's worth.
So per PSU data, Washington County did not lose population.
Which is interesting, I've heard both, I have heard both sides of that, so I don't know.
I don't have to go and correct Eco Northwest. I mean, they delivered this at the state legislature. I came back in and then
You know.
determination was made, they're continuing to tell the story that they wanna have to, so.
Well, they had some good news and some bad news in that thing.
Yeah.
That's for certain. So, and then Saturday morning, we had our first weigh-in for the county fair, this was Steers. And the reason why you have weigh-ins is because you have to have, you have to weigh them at the early days and then they have so much time to weigh in at the second. So the, they had to weigh in somewhere between six hundred and thirty-two pounds to nine hundred and sixty pounds, something.
I mean, they're just the cows?
These are just the beginners, bad boys. And they gained, they gained two pounds a day. And they eat, what was it, one of the fair board members was telling me, they eat like sixteen pounds of grain a day. It's, it is amazing, and it's specific grain, it's not just generic stuff. So anyway, it's, it was very interesting to do that, Maida. And I went and attended that and Maida will dress more warmly for the next one, I am sure. She was thinking it had a little bit more cover than what it did. But it was, it was cold and it was rainy, so, but anyway, thank you, Maida, for attending that. And we've got a couple more coming up, the pigs are the most fun, so don't forget, don't miss that one. And then.
Pigs you've ever seen in garbage barrels.
Screaming like.
I'm in all kinds of vehicles.
They do. So anyway, let's see, this week I'll be attending a couple of GPI events, their monthly board meeting, and then they're doing a market insights for electeds. And as well as the Portland Chamber is also got another event this week that I'll be attending. So those are all either, most of them are in person in Portland. And then Saturday night, I'll be attending the Hillsborough Schools Foundation fundraiser. There, sorry. It just ran out, didn't it? A little bit.
Mine will be short, I was on vacation last weekend, unlike your experience, I did not gain two pounds a day. But sometimes, sometimes it feels like it.
I didn't say I did, but I.
Terry's still trying to figure out how to eat all that grain. Exactly, exactly. So, and then tomorrow I have community action planning retreat, so that'll be half day tomorrow. A meeting with LUT this afternoon to discuss M-Step. And lastly, I just wanna point out that I, I have been assigned to the Waste Fee Policy Group. The meetings at, at Metro, excuse me, Waste Fee Policy.
And, uh, but the meetings have all conflicted with our meetings. Tom Eggleston has been sitting in on those meetings and we've been discussing what's happening there. So I'm very sorry to see him go, but my, my, uh, gift to him getting, you know, leaving gift, his leaving gift is going to be, make sure I have, um.
So you're announcing news to the rest of us that we do not know.
Well, way to go. You let the cat out of the bag, didn't you?
I'd like to turn the mic over to Tanya.
Bummer, we're losing Tom Eggleston.
And I'm sorry that I did that. I just.
Let the cat out of the bag.
And I've been working with him so closely on these things. So I, and I didn't, I didn't recognize. I apologize if I took your foot in the air. But, uh, anyway, I'll let you, I'll let you continue with that. So that's, that's my report.
I could jump back to, I, I, I may, um, Nafisa and I went for dinner. I'm trying to get you out of this.
Keep talking.
Nafisa went to dinner with our new lobbyists in DC, not our new lobbyists, but our new individuals. They're, they're still with FANS great. But, uh, these were three new people. We, uh, the guy that was overseeing our team took a job with Coca-Cola. So we met with, uh, the three new ones.
David.
David.
Good for him.
Know that.
Yeah.
Only because he told me.
Deflection. Anyway, uh, anyway, just to let you all know that we, we've, uh, I, I felt very comfortable with our, uh, with our new lobbyist folks and, uh.
Does this person have a name?
Uh, there's three of them.
Okay, so GR will let us know someday. Okay.
I can tell you it's John, Jim and Maggie. Don't ask me anything other than that. But we had a great dinner.
But one of them's going to be our key contact, I hope. Jim, great.
I'm done.
Yes, you are.
Cam doesn't like being in the hot.
No, no, no. I don't like being in trouble.
From the eyes of.
My reputation precedes me. Thank you.
I should just pass.
Erin, do you have anything to say?
Okay, Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Fai, which one of you would like to follow all of that?
For the record, we, we only hear you all board members laughing. We didn't hear the comments. So if somebody wants to repeat the comments from the audience.
Overarm.
Is that you have to be present?
From the way the chair was laughing, I figured nobody wants to repeat it. Um, I, I too went to the NACO conference. Uh, it was a really great conference. I really appreciate the content and how well thought out and organized everything is. This is my second time attending NACO conference. So it, I was comparing last year to this year and the content. I agree with Commissioner Willie. It was heavily focused on affordable housing and of course, to give her help, but, um, it was also really great content. I went to the Transportation Committee that ran all the way to four PM, Commissioner Willie. I think every session went four PM. Don't cheat yourself on that. The, the transportation, it was really heavy on updates and available funding. Um, and made a lot of good connections, um, uh, others who are really are doing some good stuff in their counties and others who thought Washington County wanted to borrow some, some of the stuff we're doing. So, uh, really good, good, uh, transportation pressure. And there's been a lot of exciting stuff. The only exciting thing that happened in that Transportation Committee was somebody asked a question, actually one of the resolutions and that was it. Uh, so it was really, uh, presentations, good content to share, um, and then, uh, popping in resolutions. And then, uh, of course, the large county session was really, really well done this year. And I think it's because the con, the content was sort of consolidated to few topics, especially heavy on, um, housing and best practices and what, um, what are folks implementing innovative ways to address the housing shortage? Uh, so that I really appreciated in comparison to the last year's, um, large counties, uh, topics versus this year. Um, and even Oregon, multiple counties from Oregon got a shout out from multiple presenters. So Oregon was a known entity to some of the best practices, presenters, uh, in the large session. And then, um, and one, one thing, you know, one topic that caught my eye, is we try to make sure we, um, cover different topics. But something that caught my eye was, um, I never really thought of immigration law and nexus to counties. Um, and, uh, there was a workshop, uh, at the, at the conference that was focused on immigration. It was more focused on, you know, that given the central role of county government in ensuring the health and safety of all members of the community. Um, how county leaders are important stakeholders in discussing related to federal immigration policies. I never really thought of, um, uh, county commissioners inter, interfacing or interacting with, um, getting involved in that kind of a topic. But it was really a good topic and, and I have a lot of follow-ups on that topic as well. Not only to learn, but, uh, to see what Washington County can do. And then, uh, I also, um, this is, so the, the, that's one thing. I guess, uh, everything Commissioner Willie said about our lobbyist team. Great, great. They were very well prepared. Aaron Doyle, you did a great job of prepping the, the lobby team. Kudos to you and your team. They had more notes and, and on top of handwritten notes on those notes. Uh, so I, I, I can recognize all those nights came, notes came from you, Aaron. So good job. I know you're very well prepared and very excited to, to take over. Um, so in terms of this week, I do have a lot of other meetings and I'm running on a lot of time. So I'll stop right there. I did have J-PAC if I could quickly just, um, give a quick summary on, uh, J-PAC. It was, um, the biggest topic conversations that we've had. Uh, I guess two things. Um, one of the big topics that just for board awareness is there were no action taken. Um, was the M-Tip, M-Tip Amendment. And then the other, uh, sort of, uh, big topic that really went over, uh, schedule and process overview was the, the regional flexible fund allocations. Um, and how Metro is getting ready to start another round of the RSFA funding for transportation projects. Uh, and what to expect and, uh, what the schedule and the process will look like. With that, I turn it back to you, Jeff.
So for, um, Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Fai, last year, uh, part of what we got out of the NACO conference was, uh, really good information on broadband and what we needed to sort out and, uh, activate here. Policy and program investment wise. You've each mentioned, uh, affordable housing. So what is it we need to do that we're not already doing?
Uh, well, from my standpoint, um, as Nafisa said, Oregon got a couple of shout-outs on their affordable housing. I think we're, uh, I didn't hear anything that was particularly, um, brand new to me, uh, as to what they were proposing. I think everybody was, uh, just trying to talk about what federal programs and monies are available and how, um, how, how important it is, I guess, to access those. Yeah.
Yep.
But, uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear, um, something that went, an aha moment, I guess. And we did get some shout-outs. So it was good.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Rogers.
Sure. Uh, a couple of fun things for us and I'll go with the conference I had last, uh, week. Much with an old friend who calmed me out of the blue, uh, Tom Bryan, who used to be there here. How quickly he has forgotten his, uh, you know, all of our involvement. He, uh, there is a life after county. So I assure you that. Tomorrow I'm meeting with Stephen. We're going to go over same thing, I guess, that you're running over today with, uh, this topic because I'm going to bring up regard to the whole WCCC, how it's operating. Need to have some discussion.
That's a March seventh round table.
Yeah, I was going to tip him off. I was going to talk.
Oh, great.
Then on Friday, I have one to another old friend of ours, uh, Mr. Tim Lockless, who's, uh, back in town. He wanted to go and have lunch. Dragging along Olivia Clark, if you remember Olivia, I worked with her for a long time.
Is he still Bellevue?
He's up in Tacoma, yeah.
Oh, so he's moved from Bellevue to Tacoma?
Uh, Bellevue. I'm sorry. You're right. Bellevue. Okay, up Bellevue.
I was going to say that'd be it.
Enjoying it up there.
Okay.
Last week, all week I was at a conference, uh, with NACLA, uh, and Clean Water Service. Three takeaways that I think you really need to know about. And you guys are going to do whatever you want to do with these in the future. But number one, uh, extremely talented team. Nothing that you don't know. Had an opportunity to speak with, uh, the president of Black and Beach. You know who they are. They're international engineering. For about forty minutes, he and I sat there and were one-on-one. Uh, and I convinced him that it's probably the number one challenge of any organization. It's the talent. And he agreed. He was on a number of other tangents. Got folks who, uh, really we need to look at how we preserve that relationship. So that's one thing you're going to need to know about. Number two, the compliance issues, uh, they're coming our way are unbelievable regulatory. All are so busy. I listen to your reports on all the things you do. We'll get ready for doubling your activity because it's the amount of new stuff that's going to happen. You know, the PFOs and others, but there's so many other regulations. Uh, it's going to be enormously, uh, time intensive in regards to, uh, amount of, it's going to come your way. So be aware of that. And the third thing, uh, this kind of plays off what, uh, Diane, this dude and her meeting about, about two weeks ago where we had a learning session. I am, and I, Brad, I promise I'm not practicing law. You promised you wouldn't practice accountancy. But as I read the four fifty-one statute, the Clean Water Stat is organized under, it's very questionable in my mind that some of the things that they're doing, they can do. It's a very narrow statute that they are organized under. It had planning, it's almost like an LID and some of the very creative things that you want them to do, and we all are plotting them. Maybe outside of the realm, but is allowed under that statute.
So that's your reference to the unrelated business income that.
Yes.
Okay.
And so it, you're going to all have to deal with that and say, there's a lot of things to do with. Catherine and I have talked about this more than once. We can talk about it again, but it's, uh, it's something you have to be aware of. So you get some big take. Got to think, what do we want to be? Pretty hard to put the genie back in the bottle. Enthusiastic. You've all been supportive. You've all liked what they've been doing. But they kind of, in my opinion, legally, you can disagree, but I've talked to you and you.
Well, we'll continue to work it on the CWS side with our CEO and our CWS legal counsel.
Yeah, but I know that you, let me finish. That, that, there, there is some issues in there, uh, and the human.
We're not making any money off of beer, Roy, so it's okay, isn't it? I'm kidding. Yeah, okay.
And beyond that, I don't have anything more. I will yield my fifty-three seconds. I guess Tanya, when we get there, tell me about gains that I'm just hearing about. I didn't even know about it.
Administrative announcement that was made by a commissioner.
Yeah.
Maybe we should come back to me later. No, we're coming to you right now.
Okay, alrighty. Um, what you, where you go. Okay, so Saturday I participated in a Tree for All CWS, uh, planting the second of two at, uh, Baum Grove. It was great. Uh, we got, uh, eleven hundred and fifty plants into the ground. Um, that was pretty fun. Uh, last night I, uh, attended a Beaverton Community Neighborhood Meeting on the Beaverton Temporary, um, Homeless Shelter. The Beaverton team did a great job. They focused on safety and security. They set up, uh, stations for, uh, people to share their ideas, challenges, ideas for addressing challenges as well as questions and worked through as many questions as time would allow. And they have a subsequent process for continuing to work on, uh, other questions and materials. So job really well, well done. Some of the people in the audience were impatient with regard to how the, um, work together as a larger group went. And so that was a little trying on my patience. Um, and for everybody else who actually followed the rules, um, but anyway. The, um, Metro Oversight Committee had a draft of their year two oversight report. I intimated on that previously. Uh, it's still going through its final process. Towards that end with, uh, the state of affairs there. Our team is working to make sure that our story of results is getting out. Because the Oversight Committee and Metro aren't doing it. So with the Metro Supportive Housing Services Tri-County Planning Body, um, we had the opportunity of hearing the Metro Auditor, uh, present his audit of early January. I had also watched his presentation to the Metro Council. What was interesting to me is that none of the TCPB members picked up on the points that the auditor made or the management response did about TCPB follow-up. Anyway, pretty strange. Uh, we then went on to, um, digest a proposal from county staff on the landlord, um, it was landlord recruitment. Um, but we went a little awry, um, on the process. So our staff followed the process, but the committee hadn't been given that, as you may recall, reminder from prior months that this was the process. I, it's fresh in my mind because I decided as a result of that committee outcome to organize all my TCPB meeting packets. Um, and there it was. So, uh, I, uh, also, uh, talked to a few of my fellow committee members. They expressed their appreciation for my taking the time to travel to Metro to attend these meetings face to face. So I'll keep doing that. Um, uh, and, but I'm going to try and work with the co-chairs and Metro staff to see how the TCPB committee can accelerate its work because it's a little too slow. And I believe that the Oversight Committee will, uh, expect some year three results from TCPB that were not particularly organized to, to get together. So the committee has to do some more work, um, beyond having adopted the goals and recommendations back in May of last year. So, um, just a couple of other quick things. Uh, I had the, um, monthly chair mayor's meeting last week as well. Uh, Danny presented on the strategic plan. Uh, they thought it was good information. Aaron Calvert, um, presented on, uh, Public Safety and Justice Paper and Challenges. They, uh, would appreciate having a forum of all the mayors and city councils to go through that and learn from it. But at the same time, uh, that they were asking for that, they were also recognizing that not everybody will make it then. So they want us to try everything. And of course, we don't have the staff bandwidth to do everything. So.
And this is all about the public safety and justice.
Yes, yes. So, uh, work to be done there. So, um, lastly, as you know, I had planned to take. Lastly, as you know, I had planned to take a long weekend this weekend, Friday through Monday, to go help celebrate my mom's ninetieth birthday, but due to a family health incident, I'm needing to start early. Diane and I managed to catch up on one of the meeting topics that got impacted. I hope to catch Commissioner Treese this afternoon, but I have two meetings related to SHS. Well, Metro and that prep for the March first stakeholder table. And so I'm planning on keeping those things, try and minimize disruption. So, but beyond that, you'll all do fine. It was nice and quiet last week while you were all gone, I will say. It was great.
Yeah, you were running solo last week.
You really were, it was very quiet.
Planting.
Baum Grove?
Yeah, where's?
That's the place where, on Gales Creek, there was a dam that we heard about, the removal of the dam. Yep, it looks beautiful. It's amazing how the creek area has been improved for fish, there's gravel areas. And it's, it's just what you would want to see from a creek. So we're, we were doing a lot of native, well, all native plantings on the flood basin and the overall property. So, yeah.
So with eleven hundred trees, you said there's another planting?
I went to the second of two.
Okay, so have they put in twenty-two hundred?
I don't know, they just reported on the, what we did Saturday.
That's a lot of trees.
Yep.
That's why I've done that.
Yep, yep. So. That's it for me. Leadership. I don't tell Ms. Angie.
Well, I'm keeping that one till the end now. That makes sure to keep your attention. So first, I'll share a new campaign which is aimed to prevent drug overdose. Washington and Clackamas Counties have launched, launched a new campaign to raise awareness, provide education, and prevent overdoses from fentanyl, which is increasingly available in our drug supply. In 2022, nearly half of the state's overdose deaths occurred within the tri-county region. The website preventdrugoverdose.com is in English and Spanish and also includes a translation widget for four other languages. For five months, each county will run paid social media ads in English and Spanish, and we're running streaming audio ads in multiple languages as well. So just want to share this website. Once again, it's preventdrugoverdose.com. I do want to lift up just artificial intelligence, draw your attention to a memo which I sent to your board on November ninth, twenty twenty-three, and this is one of the questions that Commissioner Willie had asked as he became very interested in the AI sessions he attended at NACO. The county is actively working on AI. It is, AI is present within Washington County, and we do want to embrace the technology and make sure that we do that safely. We are in the process of finalize drafting of the county's first AI policy, and so we're staying on track with the pilot process that was outlined in that memo. And without further ado, it is with mixed feelings that I am sharing that Tom Eggleston will be departing Washington County on Wednesday, February twenty-first. Tom's been with the county for fourteen years, and he has shared, quote, "It has been an incredible journey," unquote. In particular, Tom has led solid waste and recycling team through COVID, litigation, encampment management, nuisance abatement, and on and on. On February twenty-sixth, he's going to be starting a new role with Metro in their Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Department as a Policy and Program Development Manager. He's continued, he's excited to continue working to improve our region's solid waste systems by supporting the development of a regional solid waste system facilities plan. Supporting Metro's efforts to promote and implement extended producer responsibility programs and continue to collaborate as we have seen Tom do so well within Washington County and across the region. So for that group, Erin Stein with Solid Waste and Recycling, she's the current operations manager, will be appointed as the interim division manager. So just want to appreciate this opportunity for Tom to continue to grow his career within the public sector and at Washington County. That's a great deal of success when we wish employees growth in their career in other public sector organizations, and he will be missed.
Absolutely, and Tom, we hope you're listening. I first met Tom Eggleston when I was a Metro counselor. And he and I were both invited to participate on a panel with regard to sustainability and climate change and taking care of our planet. And he really impressed me, and when I thought as my time as a Metro counselor was coming to an end, and I thought about what I would do next, and had understood from Andy Dyke that he wouldn't be running for reelection. I knew that there was really impressive staff here at Washington County. And Tom played a big hand in planting that seed in me. So he's been really great to work with. We're all going to miss him and his expertise and his, his style of helping us understand pertinent issues and options and navigating them. So darn Metro, you stole the really great, great employee, but as Ms. Angie said, we're grateful that you're continuing to extend your public service career. So don't look forward, I don't envy your commute. Now please get that new all services transfer station built. Out in Cornelius, please.
We have an ally. I also want to thank Tom for all of his work, but I, I look back on the work that the GRAC did in relationship to our, all the issues with Ridwell and how, how we moved through that, and he was just a superb leader through that process as well. So that was, that was hard time, and he, he did it gracefully, and I'm sure the GRAC will miss him as well as, as well as we will.
I have one question of you, of what you've asked, it's important. Last week was a difficult transition to King City. And they lost everybody, had their leadership. Have we reached out to say? I, I especially, I have talked with my question, but I suspect they're kind of reeling, saying, where do we go now? Nothing we can do politically, but I mean, just they might have questions. If you've been in contact. Oh, great, all right, thank you.
Are the results firm? I, I don't.
They're not official results yet, but they're the latest update, given the, they went through all the votes that needed to be counted. So they're not certified official results yet. It's just the latest update, has worked through all the ballots. But I have been asked, well, what can the county do? How can the county step in? And we have to be very mindful of the fact that this is a city, an incorporated city. County does not run cities, and so the population of the community of King City remains in the driver's seat and needs to figure out its destiny. It's, everybody's crystal ball is pretty cloudy at this point, and so they'll figure it out. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Angie. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, so I, I want to dovetail on that a little bit because Commissioner Rogers asked if, some time ago, if the county has any role, if, if city councilors are recalled, and so took a quick look, and the county commissioners, if there's one remaining, city council member has no role at all. So your board does not. If, if all of them were off, then it would be a different situation, but that's not the case there.
So let's hope that city councillor doesn't resign.
There are two left?
Nope.
There's two, yes.
Oh, two?
Yeah, one of them was, he said he would reconsider, but those two appoint all the rest of the people.
Yes.
That's the mayor.
Yeah.
I appoint myself.
Okay.
That's what they should do, one of them should appoint themselves as mayor, they will.
Right. Two, a, a couple of just quick updates. This shouldn't surprise you, but we did, we are getting a challenge to ordinance eight-eight-two, the passage of that, by Thousand Friends of Oregon and.
Isle Flat Road?
Isle Flat Road. And maybe another one from a property owner, so. Just for your awareness sake.
People exercising their right to appeal.
Exactly. On the North Plains UGB expansion, we've had the bill. We've had some clarity from elections now that it will, if, if the legislature decides to pass the bill as is, which would be retroactive, it will not affect elections because signee die is on March thirteenth, and March fifteenth is is the date when they have to have all of the particular items that are going to go before the voters on that date. So, so for example, if you're.
Wait, there's a difference between will ballots go out? And do they have work that can be saved? Two different questions. So ballots don't drop until the end of April.
Right. But what I'm seeing is up until March fifteenth, they don't even know who's, who or what's going to be on the ballot. That's kind of the deadline. So for example, if you're potentially running, you have until March fifteenth, so it's not going to be a prohibition or a challenge for our elections department if the legislature passes this bill.
Well, the governor also has to sign it.
Right.
So for a long session, there's a thirty-day requirement for the governor signing bills. If she doesn't sign within thirty days, then it automatically passes. So what you need to do is figure out what the parameters are for the governor signing the bill and when it's acted, or when it's signed. They can say it's retroactive, but you still have to go through the full legislative process. And is that date before the ballot drop date or not?
We'll double check on that. Let's see. Just, there was a question on recreational immunity from Commissioner Rogers this morning. It does apply to property as well as trails, so. So it does. Well, no, you get immunity on your property, yes. There's just all, there's been a ton of litigation over time about the trail piece in particular, not so much the property.
Does your property have to be open for recreation?
Yes.
So we have lots of, the part of the question was on a lot of our drainage areas. Some that county or Clean Water Services owns, but those are not maintained for recreational access.
Right, so you'd be trespassing at that point.
Right, so it's just for those properties where there's recreational access.
Trust that. I, I would say yes. You don't necessarily have to post, but don't, don't quote me on that.
Well, alongside of that, Salmonberry, we're taking the approach of we are posting regularly, often, all over the place. Because we've got that seven miles that we pulled rail and, and ties out, and it's a nice walkable wide surface now, and immediately people were on it. So we have, a few weeks ago, we put up no trespassing signs and all of that stuff. We, it's still probably going to be highly trafficked, but at least we, we have taken that step. And part of it was because of the recreational immunity.
Yeah. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Diane, Clean Water Services.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon, Board of Clean Water Services. I also help answer Roy's question, are water quality facilities we fence? So that's how we keep people out of it. But there, it's an interesting question that I posed to the team because there's lots of bioswales that are on the side of the road. Raise an interesting question. So we'll take a look at it. On February fourteenth, Roy Rogers was recognized for his commitment and services to the region as the board of director for Clean Water Services and his dedication to the environment and also NACWA. So he received the National Environmental Achievement Award for Public Service. That's a pretty big deal for NACWA to do with that.
Congratulations.
I'd like to see that highlighted in a presentation in one of our business meetings.
That sounds great. Yeah, he can bring his beautiful. We weren't sure TSA was going to let him through the enforcement.
Glass or metal?
So thank you, Roy. As Roy talked about, there's just more and more regulations coming down the pike, and that's why the team and them talked about the long-term regulatory compliance. So not only do we look at the needs of today's permit, but permits on the road and beyond that, so.
Is NACWA the conference set where for current and future boards, we would look to get more education?
It's a different conference than the left, it's really about policy. So it is really good. And I, I do suggest that they know Roy, Roy always gets.
President there next year.
Seven July, yeah. But I know Roy gets a lot out of, from a water quality policy and eventually. So we are following a Supreme Court case called, that's coming before the Supreme Court, called Sheets versus the county of El Dorado, California. And it, it goes to the question of the exaction of systems development charges or impact fees at the time of building permit, and they're trying to decide whether or not it is exempt from the unconstitutional conditions as related to Nolan and Dolan here, right here in Tiger. So just because we have SECs and impact fees through legislation, they're bringing this question to bear. And so NACWA has submitted, I mean, because they were arguing it from the utility perspective, but I I'm a little surprised at how split the discussion is. So there's going to be, that will be a very interesting case when it's rolled upon, so we're following it closely.
And it'll have implications not just for stormwater and wastewater, but drinking water.
Right.
And all the transmission.
Transportation. This was a question about a manufactured homes exaction for a transportation. Question that came here to this.
Wow.
Yeah. I know you're probably following it too.
Yes, we're following it.
Wow.
But thank you, Roy, congratulations.
What was the name of that award again?
It's the National Environmental Achievement Award for Public Service.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Well, except on behalf of the National Environmental. They're, they're a lot of really good authors. We all know that. We all, guys are stars.
I guess my question about the water, is that because the water has more bad stuff in it? Or is because they want to clean the water better?
You know, it's because of the regulatory compliance issues are because we clean the water so we can discharge it to rivers. And the rivers are having more and more water quality issues. So essentially, one day, we're on this trajectory to almost have drinking water technology. Kind of where this is going. There's just more and more water technology. So you want to get ahead of the game to see if the reasonable potential is going to occur, so you can make changes now before you get thrown in. It's called the team deal process. And the team, that's why the team wanted to share that they can have that last point of thinking, you know, planning ahead. Because you can't put new technology in, getting a court order to do it in a short timeframe without spiking rates. That's why we try to keep rates over the long term. And as Roy talked about, you know, I'm bringing in the team so that all of the services we provide has the next. so that all of the services we provide has the nexus to regulatory compliance. But as Roy has said, there's many things that we can do, especially with resource recovery. And, and that's what I'm hoping to show the board as relates to energy and materials, these other things. But that is what a water resource entity would do. But so that's the, I thought we had a good discussion in government that our, our board's learning. So it's all an interesting topic, yeah. But thank you.
Owey's owey.
It's never boring.
No, it's ever evolving. Thanks. Okay. Anything else for today? We're running right into the end of February. Go team, go. We have sunnier days. Hopefully, nobody's traveling down to flooded California with all their landslides, so. Okay, take care, that's the end of today's work session. Thank you.